Sorry, you gotta put the big voice. Zach. How you doing, sir?
Good.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Celine Area Schools on October 8th, 2024. Standing as you're able, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Tim Austin.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. I'd like to pass the microphone over to Superintendent Lott, who would like to do a little recognition.
Thank you. We're here to honor the SHS track team. The track teams had a remarkable season with both the girls' and boys' teams showcasing impressive performances. The girls' team, consisting of eighty-two athletes, secured a strong finish by placing second in both the SEC and regional championships. On the other side, the boys' team with one-hundred-and-seven athletes continued their dominant streak by winning the SEC league title and regional title for the thirteenth consecutive season. They also maintained a seventy-two dual-meet-winning streak and set five new school records last season, including records in the hundred-meter dash, one-hundred-and-ten-meter hurdles, four-by-one-hundred relay, and four-by-two-hundred relay. The extensive coaching staff for this past season included head coaches Corbin Brown, boys' head coach, and Brian Bowes, the interim for Wendy Lagerquist. And the assistant coaches include the distance staff of Derek Stern, Carl Spina, Gary Harrison, Adam Dietrich, Dom White. And the sprints include Brian Bowes, Corbin Brown, Emily Reel, and Sophie O'Connor. And the field event staff are Chris Jagidzinski, Sean Conlin, David Medley, Ian Gifford, Christine Brown, and Lexi Short. So congratulations to our student, athletes, and coaches on these amazing accomplishments. And what we'd like the track and field team to do next is to line up over here and everybody come up to the microphone and you're gonna say your name and what event you participated in. Then we're all gonna meet over here by the TV screen and take a big picture with the Board of Education. Do you wanna start, Mr. Brown? Yeah, you wanna begin? Okay, great. Got a camera? Yeah, I have some.
All right, so go ahead, athletes. Stand on up. Like I said, I'm Corbin Brown. I'm the men's head track coach. Have done the JV boys' sprint and then helped with the varsity, both boys' and girls' sprint side with Coach Bowes. And then this is Savannah, who has helped. She was at high jump and sprints with either myself or my wife throughout the season. So thank you for the recognition.
Hi, Wendy Lagerquist. I was out on maternity leave, but I do sprints, jumps, and hurdles.
How's it going? I'm Aiden Burton. I'm one of our seniors and I'm gonna be a captain next year. I would like to thank the board for the recognition and I'm running the one-hundred to four-hundred meter races.
My name is Nick Roman. I'm also a captain and sprinter and hurdler.
I'm Yusuf Jurish and I'm a jumper, hurdler, and sprinter.
My name is Chris Hansen. I run the four-hundred, four-by-four, and four-by-two.
I'm Charlotte Warren. I'm a sprinter. I run the one-hundred and two-hundred and I'm a future captain for this season.
Hi, Brian Bowes. I was the interim women's track coach last year and I've been the varsity sprints coach for a long time here. Very proud of all these people.
I'm Kalen Austin and I run sprints and hurdles.
Hi, I'm Phoebe Ward and I do sprints and hurdles.
My name is Grace Will Briski. I'm an upcoming track captain for the season and I run four hundreds, eight hundreds, and miles.
I'm Mackenzie. I'm a future track captain for next year and I do middle distance, so eight hundreds and four hundreds.
I'm Gillian Hayes. I'm a distance and hurdler.
I'm Charlotte Smith and I'm a sprinter and hurdler.
My name's Ryan Stevan and I do mid-distance.
I'm Jake Soleil and I do the sixteen and thirty-two hundred.
I'm Jack Day and I do jumps and distance.
I'm James Rush. I do sprints and I'm gonna be a junior captain next year.
We're all gonna... We're all gonna smush together and the board will join you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Before we get on to the public comment section, I just wanted to move my response to previous public comment up to the front very briefly. Last Thursday, as most of you know, we hosted a special meeting of the Board of Education. And since that evening, one of the many issues of concern raised was that we didn't livestream the meeting. And I realize now that this did create the appearance of a lack of transparency and that was not our intention or my intention. So this was a decision made entirely by me before the meeting. I just wanna clarify that. The agenda for the meeting was originally supposed to be that we were going to, we would gather, we'd go into closed session and maybe have some public comment afterwards. I had no idea we would have as many attendees as we did. I also didn't think that streaming an hour or two of dead air at the time would have been very helpful to anybody. So I kinda stuck with the decision. Now, I've since been made aware that the SCTN, our local network, regularly does this with city council. They go into closed session and they have two hours or so of dead air and then they come back out, but it's streamed the entire time. I appreciate it knowing that. We're gonna try to be consistent in the future, so going forward, as long as I'm board president, I will automatically stream all our meetings, dead air or not. And I just wanted to say, thank you for understanding. I really do appreciate the comments I've received about that issue. Obviously, it stuck out in a lot of people's minds, so I just wanted to say that. We are in the public comment section now. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note, the students will be given priority to speak on any topic, whether it's on the agenda or not. Just, I've lost my track here. The first public portion of the meeting will be limited to one-half hour, thirty minutes, normally limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end to allow for any other comments. Individuals addressing the board should really take into account the rules of common courtesy. Public participation cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. Oh my gosh, I'm gonna have a little trouble. I got it now. We have two student speakers this evening, Isaac Furlong and Jaden Coleman. So in that order, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Isaac Furlong. I play football boss in Lee and I'm the center. I wanna say thank you again for allowing me and my teammates and my community to speak tonight at the board meeting. I come again asking that the school district administration and athletic department just do what is right in regard to the situation concerning the forfeits and the eligibility of my teammate. I just ask that there is more effort put into this appeal with the MHSAA than there was with the request to forfeit. I just ask that honestly and integrity be completed and used in this process, regardless if it was done in the invitational initial investigation. I've always been taught that correcting my wrongs is better than just letting it go. Knowing that it was not done correctly, nobody will remember what was done wrong if you finish by doing what is right. And I think it's right that we overturn these forfeits and allow my teammate to play out the rest of the season. You, thank you for listening and thank you for your time tonight.
My name is Coleman Ross and I'm a senior and a captain of the football team. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk today. Today, I'm asking that the action towards the appeal for the forfeiture of our first three wins and eligibility of my teammate is made with more urgency. The MHSAA board meets next in November. By then, it'll be playoffs and the playoff points of the wins we had to forfeit will be officially lost. Me and my teammates have worked so hard this season and have gone through so much together just to get punished for something that we didn't have anything to do with. I thank you once again for giving me the time and an effort, or I thank you again for you giving the time and effort into what's right. Me and my teammates appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Jaden Leonard, team captain for the football team. I wanna thank you guys for letting us speak once again. Now, we only have officially two home games left of our senior year and we obviously deserve a chance for more than that with us being an undefeated team. And I think that you guys should, once again, of course reconsider the choices and also try to make the appeal process go faster because playoffs are coming up very, very shortly and I think we need to make that decision happen fast. Thank you so much.
We're at the point where we look at the agenda. Items can be added or deleted from the meeting agenda or the order changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. Agendas have to be approved before we proceed. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
That's Gerbi. Support Austin. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we have a quorum tonight. That's seven-zero. Thank you. Student showcase. I'd like to pass the microphone over to our student representatives who have set up a student showcase this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Today's student showcase, we reached out to the Celine High School Key Club and asked if they would present on what their organization is and what they do. And today's presenters are Maddie Finicaro and Rhea Kack. So if you guys are ready, we are ready for you.
Thank you for inviting us to showcase the Celine High School Key Club. So the Key Club is a high school Celine club that's focused on volunteering and we provide students with enriching volunteer opportunities that promote leadership and build character in the high school and like the Celine and Ann Arbor community. We participate in acts of service that directly impact the lives of others with our local, regional, and global communities.
Yeah, and right now we have about eighty-five active members. Collectively, we have about two-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight hours of community service. And then we've also participated in one-hundred-and-eighty-seven service events. And we have three monthly partnerships, which are the Celine Rec Center, Celine Area Social Services, and Give365. And then we also have three affiliate programs, so we work with Celine Kuanis and the Celine Middle Schools Builders Club, along with Circle K. And then our three main areas of focus are zero hunger, good health, and well-being, and quality education.
So we have four outstanding service leaders, Rhea, Maddie, Jacob, and Eduardo, three of which are our board members. But besides these four, there are many more members who are above twenty-plus hours of service and have achieved this merit ward through their volunteer hours.
Okay, one of our monthly partnerships is Give365, which is a volunteer program in Ann Arbor that focuses around like the parks and like cleaning up those areas. So what the Celine High School does with them is we plan like certain cleanups that focus on like the trails, the nature. And in the past, we've cleaned playgrounds, bike trails, and just like kept their park system up and running and that's open for the public. Additionally, like we have like assisted events going on in the park. So upcoming, we have like a trick-or-treat thing that's going up in Gallup Park that we'll help assist with.
And then another organization that we work with is Celine Area Social Services, which is located in Celine, Michigan. It's a one-hundred percent community-funded organization that provides food assistance and emergency aid. What we do though, we help pick up food, organize, sort, and stock the food. And then during the winter and like around Christmas time, we help provide presents and give families in need presents.
Additionally, we have House by the Side of the Road, which is located in Ann Arbor, but it works with a bunch of underprivileged people in the Washtenaw community, providing clothing and small house items that they can't, may not afford. So we work with them by organizing and giving out and distributing these products in their store.
Okay, finally, during our meetings, we have service activities. So the Moss Children's Hospital, Ann Arbor Meals on Wheels, and the Huron Valley Humane Society are the main like organizations we work with during these meetings. So for the Moss Children's Hospitals in past meetings, we have like tied and made handmade blankets for the children and like given them out to the hospital. Additionally, on our past meeting, we've worked with Ann Arbor Meals on Wheels to make like holiday cards. So the past one was like fall Halloween cards to their clients and we drop them off so their like citizens and clients can have cards to open and handmade cards, especially for these upcoming holidays when they might otherwise not. And additionally, in past meetings and previous years, we've worked with the Huron Valley Humane Society to make like their pets and dogs like animal tie knot toys. So in those meetings, we'll just hand-make toys for them and give them out to that organization. And that, I believe, is it. So thank you for showcasing our club.
They disappeared so quickly. Were there any like really simple, easy-peasy questions for them?
One question and then a statement. Are they still doing the PBJ project or is that...?
So because the PB&J project happens like Saturdays in the morning, we have to have student drivers for that. So I'm trying to see if there are like club members who are comfortable driving other students available 'cause I know last year we had stopped that 'cause there wasn't enough students who felt comfortable driving other students an hour-ish away. But I'm trying to see if there are people comfortable with that.
Yeah, that's a pretty neat project. And then I also just wanna say I just love the Key Club and, you know, the mission of the Key Club. A servant heart is, it does wonders for the people that you serve, but it also does a lot for yourself, too. And it's just amazing. So thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Gerbi? Yeah, and I'll echo that. Sorry. So I wanna thank you guys for being such a welcoming organization. My gram is part of the Key Club and it looks like he needs to really get going on his number of hour. But I always, I ask this often of groups that come to us. So what can we do as a board to support you?
I think just like, as far as I know, Key Club, at least our Celine Key Club, doesn't have a lot of funding as well as like trying to like make our own events 'cause I know it's kind of hard 'cause our club members have to pay to be like an official member and trying to be like a active and welcoming club, we don't like really like officialize that. Like to be a member, you don't have to pay to like participate in our events. But to be part of like the international district like organization, we have to pay like each of the members, high school students. So I think if like there's available funding for those who can't pay like the seventeen dollars in person and twenty-one dollars on ref track. So if there's like any available funding for the students who may not have the money to like allocate to those member fees. Thank you.
Rhea and Maddie? I'm not sure who the third person.
My name is Anya Lenker.
Anya, who's your, you may have said this, who, do you have a staff advisor?
Yeah, it's Jennifer Denzen.
I've never heard that name before. Would she be in the audience by any chance?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that information with us. Any questions? More? Thank you very much. And please be seated.
Thank you.
We have two actions, yay. We have two actions to approve the minutes from the September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four closed session under eight A of the Open Meetings Act for both the purpose of discussion of personnel matters and superintendent evaluation.
Don't move. Stevan?
Stevan? The Tim, Tim Austin's support? Thank you. For those unfamiliar with this process, since it was closed session, closed meaning the public doesn't look at it, we, as the board members, will just review the document to make sure that we captured the minutes correctly and then return them to Secretary Miller and then vote. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry? It was Jay Stevan and Tim Austin, or T Austin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you very much, seven-o. I also would like to entertain a motion to approve the bid of Dow Equipment Service Incorporated as recommended by La Cole Planners and submitted by Rex Clary, Executive Director of Operations, for the diesel exhaust fluid and lubrication equipment for the new operation center in the amount of fifty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy dollars.
I'll make the motion. Gerbi?
Gerbi? Thank you. Oh, there you are, sir.
So this is one of the last items we need to purchase for our operation center. This will enable our mechanics, of course, to work on the school buses effectively. This replaces the system at our current garage, which is non-functional. It hasn't worked in many, many years. So this will allow us to be efficient, allow the proper storage, meet EPA requirements for the new center, and allow two stations for our two mechanics with an option to grow to a third bay as needed. Dow's equipment also is our supplier for the new lift bus for the left, for the new lift at the new station. We are moving two lifts over that they provided in the past, so they'll be handling the installation with the extended warranty. And Mr. Upton is also a Celine Area School resident. He's got students in the staff. He's got students that have graduated from Celine Area Schools and been a, you know, a partner with us over the last ten years that I've been in the transportation business, I guess.
We may have a question or two. I do have a quick one. I never thought about this until this, tonight, but we are moving some equipment, some of our expensive pieces of equipment from the old setup to the new area. We're not purchasing everything brand-new from the ground up.
Majority of our equipment is moving over.
Excellent.
Majority. Besides the new lift and this, this...
I remember voting on the lift a few meetings ago.
Yes.
Any questions from the rest of the group? Nope, nope. Well, Mr. Clary, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Congratulations. We have two or one scheduled report. There she is, ready to go. I love that you're all prepped and ready to go. We have your Michigan Integrated and Continuous Improvement Plan, the MYKIP for short, update presented by Kara Davis.
Thank you so much, Dr. McPhee. And I am joined this evening by members of the Teaching and Learning Team, Jennifer Nelson, Caroline Stout, and Ryan Kerr. And so they'll all be helping me to present out on some information related to our Continuous Improvement Plan this evening. And we are so excited to be here to talk to you about academics tonight because we have so much to be proud of across the board and certainly as relates to student achievement, as related to our district's continuous improvement goals. Specifically, the one that we're reporting on tonight is the top one, which is about increasing overall mastery and content areas as measured by local assessments, regardless of subgroup, by increasing staff competency and the use of evidence-based culture response of instruction. Our MYKIP journey, so our Continuous Improvement Journey, has really been oriented around our strategic frames and our district mission, specifically also leveraging our intentional work with cultural response and instruction, our DEI three-year plan, social, emotional health, and well-being, and of course, our SAS compass. And it's important to note that all of these things play a role in us being able to achieve our goals. And each building also has building strategies that are a part of our overall plan. And tonight, you'll hear essentially some of those outcomes as related to us putting our plan in motion. Tonight's going to be a little different than previous reports that we've given across the years. Typically, we have a lot of charts and graphs. They are within the publicly available slide deck. However, they are all at the end and we front-loaded some of the key highlights in about fifteen slides versus eighty-four, which I'm hopeful that everybody will appreciate. All right. And with that, I'm gonna invite Caroline Stout, our district MTSS coordinator, to come up to begin a quick overview of the highlights of our assessment system.
Hi, thanks for having us. I wanted to highlight the different types of assessments that we are going to be summarizing today. And there's a couple of new ones and a couple of updates. But first, I wanna take you back to college and the different types of assessments. This is something that is part of the work that we've done with all of our staff and our teacher leaders to just continue to get better at being data-driven and using student outcome data to drive our decision-making and our curriculum reviews and department meetings. And so we're really trying to make sure that our assessment suite or toolkit includes the right balance of all five of these types of assessments. And here they are with the corresponding little symbol that we made up, showing the ones on the left that measure both literacy and math or, and/or other things, and the ones on the right that are literacy or math-specific. And I apologize 'cause the yellow's a little hard to see, but you're familiar with the cadence. We've been reporting on that for a while. NWA, you are familiar with. However, there's an update there that I wanted to point... However, there's an update there that I wanted to point out. Last year, NWA changed the algorithm that they use to present questions to students for both reading and math. And for math, they also changed the weight that each item was given. Their goal, as we understand it, was to try to better align their assessment with grade level expectations and the Common Core standards for each grade. But they did not re-norm the assessment. So we've had numerous conversations with them and they assure us that the current norms are still valid. However, they also suggest that if you want to, you can kind of use this transformation tool to try to make that adjustment. The long and short of it is, we can no longer show multiple years of data. We can really only compare this year to last year because last year is when they changed that algorithm. And when we get into the trends, I'll, I'll point out, one of the things that we think has happened, and we've kind of done our own mini-study here, is we think that fall scores in math specifically are slightly deflated. And we think that winter and especially spring scores might be slightly inflated. We're not sure. It's possible that everybody was just having a warm, warm fall and a great spring. That's possible. But I just wanted to give you that heads up because it means that we can't use that as, as well as we hoped we could. And then below that are some of our state assessments. And of course, always teacher-created assessments and observations. And then on the right, I wanted to bring your attention to the Diagnostic Foundational Skills Assessments in K3. That's a tool that we added last year. Jen and I did a lot of work with a committee of K2 teachers, K1 teachers, and then involving second and third grade, especially this year, to kind of fill what we had as a little bit of a gap in the diagnostic area. So we have Akadians at the lower L that helps us with universal screening practice monitoring. But these tools help us really pinpoint, for instance, where the specific phonics patterns that students still need to master. And that was something that was lacking before. So it's been really great, it's been adjustment, but we've, we've seen a lot of positives from it. So one of the big highlights this year is that, that new assessment tool that measures more in-depth foundational skills, phonemic awareness, phonics, letter sound ID. We also asked students to do things that we did before, like write their name and, and identify letter sounds, aligns really nicely with Akadians, but gives us that deeper look. When we say diagnostic, we don't mean we're diagnosing anything, right? This is not, we are not doctors. But we do mean that we're getting more in-depth, more specific with what we are understanding of where students' learning is, what they, what skills they require and what skills they still need. So with that, we've been able to really triangulate data a little bit better and to see some of the highest percent at benchmark of kindergarten, first and third grade students that we've seen since the pandemic, which is really exciting. So I know the last couple of years, we've been up here talking about how, yep, we're still kind of digging ourselves out and things are starting to look a little more pre-pandemicy, which I think is grammatically correct. And the one exception is if you recall, last fall, we did have a first grade class that just for whatever reason came in with a higher amount of need, right? Some lower scores. So that grade is now a second grade. And they entered second grade with seventy-six percent of them basically being at benchmark, which means low risk, which is still good, but was like our second best since the pandemic, not our best. So still pretty excited about that. We also have some specific information there that we have gleaned from the Diagnostic Foundational Skills Assessments. And our overall trend is that we continue to have students who are doing great with overall reading and the focus of reading, which is always comprehension, right? Making meaning out of text. And we know that based on Fountains and Penel, we, the retail part of Akadians, the NWA. I have that caveat on NWA where, yes, we continue to have, in all grades, fourth through eighth, at least eighty percent of students scoring above the fortieth percentile, which is kind of that cut point for risk, which is really great. But asterisk, we do want to wait till those new norms come out, probably next summer, just to throw a party on that one. The areas to improve, we have been working on this for a number of years and we're continuing on our journey of continuing to just solidify our foundational skills that we know will have an upward effect, positive effect in accuracy, fluency, and therefore comprehension, and also spelling in the upper grades. But what that means is that we have a close eye on some of those early indicators, those early skills, like students' ability to blend and segment words, or sounds and words, rather. In kindergarten, what we're learning is that at the end of kindergarten, even though we've had consistently eighty percent of students be really great on those skills, we have a bigger summer slide with that than we do in other grades. Possibly because our kindergarteners aren't going home and, you know, reading independently all summer. But we want to make sure that we get closer to a hundred on that. And then we have a couple other points there with continuing to get a higher level, a higher percent of students who are mastering those early basic phonic skills in K1. Improving inflectional endings, which is like all the difference sounds of ED. Turns out it makes three of them. Um, INGS, yes. Vowel teams, which is like E or IE, sorry, EA, EE, E or IE, AI, AY. There's a bunch of them. And our controlled vowels. And then also we're doing a lot to realign our scope and sequence, K5 this time. We've never done that before, where we've had a phonemic awareness and phonics scope and sequence continuum that goes all the way up to fifth grade. So those are some of the highlights there. What just happened there? So in the math highlights, by the way, this is what happens when somebody says, put all the data into one slide. I apologize and know it's a lot of words. If you want the graphs, they're still there, they're just lower. And if you want to nerd out, you know who to reach out to. So in most grades, K3, we did see spring scores in math Akadians that were the highest to date also, which was really great. We see fall scores entering that are on par or better than last fall. Again, that second grade class is kind of the, the one that for whatever reason was a little bit lower. And then we do continue to see that trend of students who have higher concepts and applications or rather reasoning skills than we do those basic skills. So kind of the same trend as in math, as in reading. And so we are continuing to work on building stronger number sense foundational skills like automaticity with facts. And we're continuing to consult with Sarah Powell this year and doing some work in tier one, now that we've confirmed that everyday math is going to continue to be our curriculum. For NWA math, we spent a really long time looking at a lot of numbers there. And the trend looks really good, but we really can't say for sure that it is entirely because of what our students have done. So to give you an example, the average RIT is, RIT is just their unit of measurement, right? And so the average RIT score from spring to fall in fifth grade dropped by almost ten points, which is a really, really big drop. Before the change in algorithm, it, they, on average, went up by one point eight RIT points. And then there was the in-between year where we had old algorithm in the spring, new algorithm in the fall. And there we went down by three point five points. So same with the other grades, although not as significant. My hunch is that we are seeing a bigger impact of the algorithm change in the lower grades because if the assessment is trying to align with grade standards, those grade standards in fourth and fifth grade are pretty set. By the time you get to eighth grade math, the students have gone into a couple of different trajectories. So they're not as well-defined. So apologies if this is more K3 focus. We will have better data in a year or so with NWA. So questions on these slides?
All right, so Caroline was speaking to our local assessments that we perform in school, or in district with students. But I also wanted to take an opportunity to highlight our state assessment results. You know, Celine, this year, I mean, we are ranked among the top performers in the state and number one in Washington County when you look at a series of batteries of test and combination. So whether it is all of them, third through twelfth grade across M-Step, PSAT and SAT, we're ranked number fifteen, so in the top twenty of districts in the state. And then for our combined M-Step tests, so third through eighth grade, we're ranked in the top ten. And this performance, of course, we have, we don't always, you know, spend a lot of time talking about how we compare to our peer districts, but I do think it's important to see this stellar performance of our students across the, the state itself and then, of course, in the county. Additionally, in order to continue to think about our student performance, we are considerate of our class trends over the year. So in those data slides at the end of the slide deck, you'll see that continued analysis of their state performance. But to sum it up here for you, we are seeing improved performance in evidence-based reading and writing, social studies in eighth and eleventh grade, as well as in science, you're seeing a huge improvement as well, and in our AP tests, too. A place where we are still considering our focus is really in thinking about math. This is true statewide and nationwide, that we did see a little bit of a dip in certain spaces in the PSAT and SAT and math scores. So while our students are still scoring above the national norm and the state norm and right up there with those top performers, it's an area we're still really thoughtful about. This year, the PSAT and SAT, sorry, this past year, the PSAT and SAT moved to digital format. So it was moved onto the computer and there were some additional new test items. And so currently, something we're focusing on is working with the math teams to analyze those results and the related strategies that they had just begun to develop last year as a part of the math curriculum review in order to think about how those are going to have a positive impact on math performance on, on the assessments moving forward. It was interesting in looking at the graphs, the one particular grade was eleventh grade that took a, a drop. And the department chair at the high school mentioned to me that that was the grade that had the most disrupted foundational math in middle school. So we were wondering about if that was something that we could think about in terms of those foundational skills that were built up in those early algebra classes that then reflect on the later PSAT and SAT classes, our tests. In addition, something that we monitor, Beth Russo was not able to be here to present with us tonight. She's our secondary MTSS coordinator, is our attendance and our supports that we're providing in school. And we think that attendance is really important. I know that you are really well aware of the impact that attendance has on student success because of that ability to have a continuous improve, or continuous access to the school environment, continuous experience with the curriculum as well as continuous access to all the supports that we provide. I mean, we are feeling really good about the trends that we're seeing in attendance rates across the last few years, whether it is steady and/or improving in certain key areas. It's something that we're continuing to monitor, but we are feeling like we had a positive end to last year and then that we're continuing to see those improvements this year. We have continued with Homework Hive and that data has shown that our, our students who have been participating in Homework Hive and have participated consistently, so have attended the supports that we're offering, are able to see that success in their grades at a later time. Something that we're continuing to focus on this, in this particular area, is building, continuing to build consistent systems for attendance that carry over, whether it's turnover leadership or deans, so that we are, and that we're building relationships and then looking at what works for attendance for school so that we could continue to lever strategies that will help our students feel really engaged with our school environments. And that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
Thank you. So for the last couple of weeks, I've been pulling subgroup data, performance data from spring 2024. My data is on, starts on slide sixty-four, I think, if you're looking at the charts. I'm not going to go to it in this particular presentation. But just trying to look at some trends across subgroups and see if we can start telling a story. And there are stories. One of those stories is that it's difficult to determine trends, largely because many of these subgroups, or some of these subgroups, rather, are particularly small. So if you look at the data slides, you'll see that there are some numbers in parentheses by each subgroup. And I have them separated out by grade level in each slide and that represents the N for each of those groups. So if you're looking at the chart, you might see that fifty percent of one subgroup is below benchmark, while fifty percent exceeds, and that might tell a story until you notice that it's an N of two, which statistically is challenging to sort of develop trends. But I do have this data for these subgroups going back to 2021. And part of what I expect to be doing for the rest of this year is looking at those trends across those subgroups across the last four or five years. Some other trends that we can identify, though, is that the district does appear to be becoming more diverse, particularly socio-economically. So I've pulled just slides from three particular subgroups that show that trend data. This shows a demographic trends going back to 2022. I didn't include 2021 because testing for ninth and tenth grade had been disrupted at, at that time. So you wouldn't get an accurate grid, but the numbers that are available from that year, I think, reinforce this trend. So there's another data point that you can add to that, but if it were part of this grid, it would look very dramatic. But we do see a rise in that and sort of increased need, I would argue, for the disproportionality that we see in the subgroups, especially when you look at the fact that we are doing very well as a district, to sort of echo some things that Kara has said. When you look at the disproportionality within subgroups, I would argue that that points to the need for deep and culturally responsive approaches in the classroom. That's making my pitch for my job. One thing that I will point out in a sort of big win, I think, is to look at the comparisons between our multilingual, our EL learners and those who are formerly in need of EL services. If you look at our students who were, had previously been receiving EL services and no longer are receiving EL services, with one exception, no students in that former EL category are performing not proficient on these regards. So I think that's a big tip of the hat to our EL services within the district. And acknowledge here also that we have brought on board recently a secondary EL coordinator and teacher to serve our sixth through twelve population to help sort of reinforce some of these trends that seem to be moving in a positive direction. And also acknowledge the work that's being done by members of our Teaching and Learning Team, by Caroline, by Beth Russo, to sort of work with communities and work with groups to make sure that these trends continue in a positive direction. And I think that's Jen.
Good evening. So one of the things that I get to do in my role a lot is think about how we can support our teachers. And we're always striving to meet the needs that they have so that they can meet the needs of their learners in their classrooms. So one of the ways that we're able to do that this year is through the 35J grant. So the 35J grant is a grant that's given to districts to use in K5 spaces to improve literacy instructional practices by investing in high-quality research-based practices and professional learning. And so we have been able to do a lot of really great things for teachers and impacting classrooms with that additional money this year. One of the things that we did is we are partnering, partnering this year with Julia, Julia Lindsay. She is a researcher. She researched at the University of Michigan with Dr. Nell Duke, where she got her doctorate degree and now lives in Washington DC and does consulting. She was a former classroom teacher and she is working with us. She worked with us to give professional development to our teachers before school started. It was an optional training before school. We did pay teachers, but we had over ninety-five percent of our teaching staff K5 come to school before a contractual day, which was really exciting. She's also consulting us in our phonics curriculum review, which is also being paid for through the 35J grant. In addition to that, she is running lab sites in Celine three times a year, one at each elementary. The first one is tomorrow at Harvest. So she's actually in district currently. And today we spent time visiting classrooms so that she can see what literacy instruction looks like in Celine and feel like she's really meeting the needs of our teachers and our students. So over the course of today, we made it to thirty-six classrooms to see reading and phonics taught. So it was a busy day. In addition to that, we're leading a Reading Above the Fray book study. At some point this year, we were able to provide her book to all staff, which teachers have just mentioned that it's been helpful. And we'll do a coordinated book study throughout the year. We have been able to purchase a lot more decodable texts. So I've talked about decodable texts before at the board, at board meetings, but these are the books that are really pinpointing the exact phonics skills that our kids are learning because we know that one thing's kids need as they learn phonics is they need repeated practice using the skill, practicing the skill that they were just taught in phonics. And so decodable texts do that. We were able to put like five and six more sets in each K2 classroom through the grant. In addition to that, every teacher got a thousand dollars to upgrade their classroom library. So one of the requirements of this grant is that all teachers have to get professional development and best practice and is practices in literacy, along with abundant reading and diverse texts. And so once teachers finish those modules or the live training and then the asynchronous module, they get access to their thousand dollars to use for their classroom library, which is also creating a lot of joy for teachers and kids. We're also paying teachers that have attended letters training or paying for them to complete Orton Gillingham training and paying them to do that outside of the classroom, purchasing new intervention tools. We are running a full phonics curriculum review, K5. We plan to use the 35J money to choose the resource that the committee decides. as well as all the ancillary resources that teachers will need to implement that curriculum. So lots of exciting things happening because of this grant. Before we had the 35J grant and we thought about the needs of our K5 staff, we were thinking about math and how we needed to turn the page on literacy a little bit as our main focus and turn to focusing on math. And so we are doing that. The 35J grant kind of caught us off guard and we couldn't miss that opportunity. So we're kind of simultaneously focusing on the same thing or on both things. But math is the real focus in K5. Over the last couple of years, we were in a math curriculum review and we partnered with a researcher out of the University of Texas, Sarah Powell, to do professional development with the curriculum review team. And the team overwhelmingly was like, our whole staff needs this training. And so this year in K5, we are partnering with Sarah Powell again. She's coming in person on our half days and coming virtually on our hour-long morning meetings and continuing the work that she started with our curriculum review team, focusing on foundational math practices like fluency, building fluency with facts and computation, vocabulary, word problems, all things that teachers have asked for support on. Turn it over to Cara to talk about some supports at the secondary level.
And similar to 35J, last year, the state of Michigan also provided us with the 23G My Kids Back on Track grant. And that grant provided us with over half a million dollars to target some of those places where we really could see where students may have been struggling and or be at risk and provide that extra assistance to them to continue to help them reach their highest level of success. So Beth Russo has been really critical in this and the 23G funding is partial funding, it's not complete funding. And it's not entirely used at the secondary level, but because of all the funding that the state has oriented towards K5, we do have a large chunk of this going to support our secondary students. And that is continuing to build capacity with our Homework Hive in terms of ensuring that we have the staffing there and providing them with the compensation to be there after school, providing private tutoring. We have partnered with Great Lakes here in Celine to provide private tutoring for students who are at risk. We have also provided a structure for our EL tutors who have developed relationships with our students in our EL programs to provide tutoring over the summer as well. Our summer boosters was in there too, and that did extend through high school. But those were targeted classes that teachers picked in certain areas that they felt students most needed and then offered throughout the summer through our community education program. So those are some examples of things we've been doing with the 23G money. And of course, continuing to build these systems that I referenced earlier. So with that, I would like to close up this presentation in terms of our data that represents our MyKit progress on our academic goal and some of the strategies that we're using to get there and the supports we're providing for teachers. If you have any questions, we are happy to take them.
I do have a few, but we'll work our way along the table.
Yep.
And I would also like to invite our student reps. If they have any questions or something strikes you as a curiosity, please feel free to mention it. Dr. Gold, oh, yes, go ahead.
I wondered if you could touch on what culturally responsive math instruction sort of looks like? Like what are some of the changes that we're making? Just, I think probably people are curious.
Sure. Yeah, so when we think about culturally responsive math instruction, it's not just, it's not just about windows and mirrors, which is a concept that we've talked about in the past. It's also about instructional practices that we're using that might bring in the art of storytelling, that might bring in different manipulatives, so different styles of learning that might bring in thinking about where math lives in the world and how it operates in different spaces so that the examples that we're using of real life mathing could reach lots of different student audiences, not just solitary ones. So one example that we've talked a lot about that might be really confusing for students, not that we've talked a lot about it, but that sometimes comes up as an easy example, it's on the tip of my tongue right now, is that if you give a student a math problem that's about soccer, that is not something that is universally known globally. And so it may be a barrier to that student being able to perform that math problem if we're not thoughtful about also providing the contextual understanding of soccer or multiple opportunities to access that math problem through maybe a variety of different sports that relate to them versus that one particular sport. So that's one example that comes to mind.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense to most parents, I think, because we, if we're trying to give our kids story problems at home to practice, you pick what they like so you don't lose them in the first sentence. So it's sort of a, you know, a more sophisticated way of doing what I think many of us have been doing for years in trying to get our kids interested in math. I also was wondering, we're number one in Washtenaw County on some of those combined tests. Do all the Washtenaw County schools take the same tests?
Yes.
So it's the same, everybody gets the same four tests, they're all taking them?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Great, well, congratulations, this is so exciting.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, first of all, I want to start with a comment. I want to make sure that I acknowledge, you know, all the work that is in here that is done by our teaching and learning team, but also by the educators, the parapros, the people in our classroom who are, who are in front of these students who are working with them every day. Like this reflects the quality of our staff at a very high level. We have a lot of parents in the room, we have a lot of people in the room who, who have a vested interest in that. And I think we're, we're doing a really good job. So I want to make sure that I say that out loud. I am really appreciative of the 35J grant and for our strong, you know, resonance of that. And is one, my first question is, is that a continuous grant? Will it continue going forward? Do we reapply for it? Do we need to get to our legislators and be like, don't take that money away?
We could definitely write to our legislators and ask for it to be renewed. But as of right now, it's a one-year grant that expires September 30th of next year.
September 30th of next year?
Yeah.
Okay. And I guess while I'm there, I love the decodable text, right? Like I just think that's a tremendous tool. And I want to thank again our staff for, you know, you said that it was tied to professional development. Well, that requires them to be really dedicated and diligent about doing those things. And there is a nice little carrot at the end, right, of $1,000 for our classroom libraries. But like, I want to make sure I made those two comments first, so thank you for that. My, I have two things that are on my mind. Number one is we moved to this intervention system, E-Whims now, and we did that in fall of 2023. One, do we find that this is a more efficient mechanism for identifying at-risk students? And then number two is how are we getting students on our radar? And how are we like going through that process with them?
So if I missed something, please let me know because I was clicking through those slides. So yes, in terms of us focusing on E-Whims, one of our hopes was to look at the indicators of success for our student body. And one of the things that we spoke about last year was the actual being able to use our systems that are in place logistically to pull this data and create something that we can monitor across time. This is something that Beth has been working with both the high school and in middle school administrative and counseling teams on developing so that we have that. And like today, I needed some data on students who were at risk and she was easily able to send me the spreadsheet that they've developed together. So they look at attendance, grades, and then other risk factors as identified by teachers. They keep a really robust list and then they have regular meetings to discuss students that they have identified that might have what we would consider indicators or flags.
So we have like an intervention team, you're saying?
It's Beth alongside of the teams in the buildings, which consist of, they vary a little bit, but essentially the building administrative teams and then the counseling staff and maybe a dean or two and another special, PBIS coordinator depending.
And do teachers and staffers make recommendations to them about students who might apply or?
There is a space where that happens at the secondary level. That's called an I-team or Student Success Meeting. At the lower levels, it's called something different. But yes, there's a place where that happens as well. But we're also not waiting for the teacher recommendations because that system has been in place for a long time.
Right.
This system is now really proactively looking at the real-time data on a weekly or bi-weekly basis in order to see where we have students who might be demonstrating indicators of struggle or at-risk behaviors or attendance or grade drops or things like that in order to communicate with the people who need to know in order to directly connect with that student. So for example, we're doing, we've increased our attendance communication with families in a positive way. And then I've been working really hard, and this is, I'm speaking with Beth's voice right now because she wasn't able to be here, working really hard to be able to connect with those students to say like, hey, good job for getting to school because in some cases it's a matter of getting them through the door in order to see that success. So seeing some really great results because of that work that's been put in.
Good. And then my last question, when I was going through the analysis report, there's, under the gap analysis piece, there was an indication for CRI, which what Lauren was kind of getting at just now about the need to hire like a specialist or a coach to, to move that work forward. Are we in the process of doing it? Have we?
That's Ryan, is that what you're talking about?
Oh, hi Ryan, okay, I just wanted to make, okay, so there we go. So that was that hire.
Yes, so in terms of coaching up, you know, how do we continue the work that we've been doing with culture responsive instruction? So teachers have been meeting, I don't want to really speak for you, but you could talk about some of the partnership work that he's been doing with teachers, to look at different units, our instructional components in order to make those shifts to better engage students.
So that's not additional support that will come?
That's continued, no, it's already, we built it in. Ryan was hired last January and we built that into the 20, a portion of his salary into 2023.
I'm seeing it now, so thank you.
Yep.
Vice President Stebbin.
Hi there, I just had two questions, one opportunity for improvement and one, one strength. So I, I did want to go back to the average RIT score in math fifth grade dropping 10 points and was just curious what, what the immediate follow-up would be to that.
Well, the first thing is Caroline and I spent quite a bit of time discussing the, again, the difference in the algorithm. And we produced some family communication to explain that. Caroline's better suited to explain that to the group, but we do feel like that difference has something to do with the algorithm.
Yeah, I want to clarify that it's not a 10-point drop in what we think of as student achievement. It's a 10-point drop in the RIT score from the spring last year to the fall of this year. But again, when I, when I speak to folks at NWA and, and I'll be honest, they did not even do this analysis themselves with their data. They only did the fall and the winter one. We thought, well, that's not the whole story, we should continue. So we did our own for spring to fall. They found that there was an average drop in fall-to-fall scores based on the old algorithm compared to the new algorithm, meaning that the new algorithm basically probably scores kids lower, with a lower RIT for the same level of performance than the old algorithm. They also found that in the winter was the opposite. In the winter, the new algorithm tended to yield higher RIT scores for what we perceive as about similar performance. We didn't have that information from NWA, which is why we looked at it ourselves. And we saw, oh boy, in the spring, you know, our students did really well, great. But then when we see them coming in the fall, they dropped 10 points. And I assure you, it's not because everyone did nothing all summer, right? Like this is, it is such an unusually large number that we really can only explain it by the change in algorithm. And we have good reason to believe that because what NWA gave us, does that make sense?
It does, thank you so much. My, my other question was, I was able to be in the Foundation for Celine Area Schools meeting with Cara this morning and I saw a lot of pride on your face when you're talking about some of the statistics that you shared here with us. So as a subject matter expert, I guess my question is, what are, what are you and the team kind of the most proud of? Like what, what is a real shining star that pops out for you?
Off the top of my head, I would think, I, my answer is the incredible collegiality that it's taken to get to this place in terms of the resilience of our staff, our building administrative teams, the teaching and learning team to really dig in and take ownership over the data and commit to looking at our systems and being really reflective in order to make the improvements. And I know that especially since we have a broader audience here today, they haven't seen this, but we've been giving this report for five years and to see how far we've, I'm actually getting teary-eyed. To see how far we've come in those five years. And it is a real tribute to the dedication of our staff, their expertise and their willingness to continue to invest in this whole process.
That's an A-plus answer, thank you.
I have one quick question, I'm going to scoot it over to the students, then we'll work our way back down. But Jen, what does $1,000 buy you these days? Are we talking little pulp books, we're not talking class sets, we're talking individual, separate titles, unique titles?
Well, some, some teachers are using it to buy like more decodable texts if they feel like it, that's needed. On Amazon, teachers are having to check out twice to fill out, fill the $1,000. So Amazon caps you at 50 items in your cart. So typically, teachers are purchasing over 100 new books for their classroom. So like 100 to 150 new resources for their classroom, on average is kind of what I'm seeing.
That's good to know, thank you. I don't think I've ever hit 50 items in my cart.
Yeah, me neither.
Don't try it, don't try this at home.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, challenge accepted.
Yeah.
Our student reps, if you have anything, if not, we'll pass it over to Mr. Austin, nothing, thank you.
I just want to thank you for the, this, this new slideshow. It's a little bit easier and not as much data, but at least you provided the data as well. And there's so much stuff that you guys have to look through when you're doing all this and crunch. So you have to love when people just change algorithms on you. And it's, it makes it so wonderful to track things. So anyways, I think it's a great improvement and I'm really happy with it, thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
So as usual, this will go to Ryan. So I have to get back to the slide, I don't know if I can get back there, I'm like 40 pages in right now, so. So talking about like the subgroups, you know, I, I saw that, I'm glad we're looking at like the intersectionality and everything. I know year after year, I've brought up the multiracial category and how that's, you know, the data, we weren't able to capture it. I don't know if that came up last year, but weren't able to, to capture that specifically as far as like the breakdown and everything. So I guess I'm just curious with the multiracial, you're looking at like specific groups as well? So like race, ethnicity?
Yes.
Okay. Have you found anything like, you know, of course, we need like the, the culturally responsive instruction. And I'm hoping that we'll see a positive change with that as well. But you're also breaking down the data and everything and?
Yeah, the data that I pulled for this report only reflects the scores from the spring, M-Step, PSAT, SAT, six through 11. But I have scores for each subgroup across from 21 to 24 that my hope is when I'm standing here in April, I can look at trends for each of those subgroups across the years, right? And that's, that's almost a full report on its own to, to look at each of those groups and the trends that are happening across of them. But I have that data and so now the next step is to start looking at it in comparison with itself, right? Across those years and looking at places where we can perform interventions or step in in terms of that culturally responsive piece, absolutely, yeah. And you, actually, something that you mentioned, Trustee A-Step, that I didn't during my portion of the presentation was that intersectionality piece of it, that we have some students that will fall into multiple of these subgroups, right? And it's, it makes it difficult to sort of suss out precisely, you know, what students are going to need those supports, you know, what specific supports, but I think that also speaks to the sort of nature of culturally responsive instruction writ large and its importance of being applied in as many spaces as possible, that's what I would say to that.
Awesome, I'm excited that you're pulling that data and really looking at it. I'm excited that you're in place to, to do that and I know that you will do great work there.
Thank you.
Thanks, great job team, this is great.
Okay, so this is probably my last report with all of you. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for the last four years and honestly, the last, I think, wow, 20, 20-something years. So it's been a joy to work with all of you and then to continue in this role. So just a couple of things that I was pulling up, I'm super jealous of the close work that you're doing with Julia Lindsay. I have had the opportunity to work with her, but not as closely in the opportunity to have her in, in the schools and working so closely with teachers and just thinking about some of the transformation that can happen with increasing, she calls them swaps, like swapping out some of, you know, maybe past practices for things that we know are more research-based and supported and can support all of our students, but especially our striving, striving readers. So I love that. I was also just going to compliment you, these reports, although, you know, the graphs can get, can, can fill up a lot of slides and can create a really long slide deck. I just want to commend you for the transparency in reporting and your acknowledgement of, your acknowledgement of the trends and, and even when they don't go your way, I appreciate the responsiveness and the targeted approach that you have for supporting the teachers and the staff because we know that power. and the staff because we know that powerful learning for students requires powerful learning for adults. So I just, when we see these numbers and when we see the data, I know that you're taking extra care to convey that to the staff, and then the staff is taking extra care to change and to add and to supplement so that students are getting the best instruction. And I think I pulled the powerful learning from the values, but when I think about the professional learning plans that you, that you share with us each year and how robust and how just really current all of the PD is that our, that our teachers have the opportunity to participate in, I think about the core value from this school-wide essentials that says meaningful change takes time, requires inquiry and revision, and is never done. So I appreciate that. And then with that, I have one more question tied with a little bit of an accolade, but I wanted to acknowledge Caroline Stout and her work on the dyslexia legislation and her advocacy for children who have dyslexia or reading struggles. And I know that you went to Lansing, and I'm sorry that I don't remember the student's name, but maybe you could elevate her name for us. But I just want to thank you for going to Lansing and for sharing your expertise and your knowledge and also for modeling that for others and highlighting the voices of a student in particular. And so then with that, I wonder what kind of changes, I know that it doesn't technically go into effect until 2028, but I think you're on the right track. And so what other kinds of changes might you be dreaming of in Celine schools as that comes our way?
Thank you, Trustee Miller. You're going to make us all cry with your final, final input here. So it is going to take a while to put in place, and some of the changes, I think Trustee Miller is referring to the passing of bills SB 567 and 568. 567 has directly to do with what we do in school, from how we screen students to make sure that we are catching those early who are showing challenges with decoding and dyslexia-like characteristics. Again, we don't diagnose anything. We're not, this is not just a bill about students with characteristics of dyslexia. It's just about evidence-based practices. So one, screening. With regards to that, there will be a committee put in place that's going to make recommendations to the state and therefore trickle down to us as far as approved assessments that are valid, reliable. Screeners, you know, back to, where were we? Back to this, making sure that we have universal screening tools that are valid and reliable, that we have diagnostic tools that help us pinpoint the focus of instruction, and then progress mine tools that help us ensure that for those who are getting extra support, we are following closely to make sure that they're closing the gaps. With regards to instruction and implementation, the law also encourages, makes, really, districts align their practices with both the art and the science of instruction, as you pointed out, to really make sure that we are using the best of what we know from research to get the best possible outcomes. And so again, we're well on our way. There's been a ton of work done by this team on a lot of different fronts. I think we're in really good shape with regards to our assessments. If we did have to add something, it'd be like one Acadian subtest called RAN, which I think might be good anyway, but I'm not sure it's actually going to be required with the law. It was in one of the earlier drafts with regards to intervention instruction. We are already working really hard to align everything that we do with what we know from research. We've implemented the hexagon, what we talk about as the hexagon tool from the National Implementation Research Network to evaluate new practices. We were in a meeting doing that today with some tools for use with our students with IPS. So all of that is just, I think, very much in the spirit. We would have been doing that anyway in Celine, and that's why I'm so proud to work here, one of the reasons. And so I think what's exciting is that it's really getting us all on the same page with the state. I think the more exciting thing is even that, as I've said before, we have no FDA, right, equivalent, and so this is kind of creating that for us. It's making it, so the state is taking a little more ownership over guiding districts in navigating this because it's hard. There's a lot, there's a lot of stuff to navigate through, and there's a lot of companies trying to sell us a lot of stuff. And then the second part of that bill has to do with higher ed, and I think that's very exciting, just making sure that we have teachers that come to, first-year teachers that come to us having had some really rigorous instruction around those practices we know to be, to be strong from the research. And that hasn't always been the case historically, and I know when I talked to my colleagues, we weren't all in school at times when we were talking about, well, what do we know from research works best? So that's really exciting, too.
Well, I can't, I can't leave the table without one more plug. In the legislation, there is a lot around literacy coaching, and I know that the district gets funding through the state, through the intermediary, the ISD, but it's really not enough for all of that's legislated in those, in that, in that package of bills. And so I hope that Jen will have some partners to work with her because I know that when teachers work with Jen, I hear just how effective it is and how motivating and engaging that can be, and then the turnaround into their classroom practices is increased even, even more. So I, that's my wish that I'll put out into the universe. So thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Miller. I do have two very brief comments. One is that this has been a long time coming, four years working with Jeff Irwin, and right from the start, Trustee, or sorry, Secretary Miller has been right in the mix of it. We even have an interview with the two of them, which I think was too long. I had to cut it to the point that it was unwatchable. Yes, somebody likes to talk. And also, I did want to, another accolade, Ryan Kerr, you thought you were done with statistical analysis, but now Dr. Ryan Kerr, congratulations, sir, on behalf of the board. Yeah, it never stops. That was just your, your union card, that dissertation, I tell you.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. That's great. Thank you very much, Cara Deves.
Thank you.
We have a very brief, don't mean to belittle it or make it smaller than it is, a brief statement from Vice President Stebbin regarding the Board of Education Ad-Hoc Committee, and she'll fill you in on that now.
Well, we talked about school too much.
They can, if they have homework, if they have homework, they can go. All right.
Is that that growling I heard?
If I may, before we move on, I just was sitting over here smiling because we're going to not only miss Jenny, but miss her expertise on the board in this particular area, so thank you. I did write something that I wanted to read, and then I would like to invite Susan and Brad if they wanted to add anything as well. And because, you know, we hear the word transparency quite a bit, and that's why this is kind of detailed, and look forward to talking to the board more about this later this evening. So here we go. "In last Thursday's session, the board directed Dr. Lodge to get information on how the board could appeal the decision by the MHSAA that required the Celine High School football program to forfeit their first three games and for one of their players to be deemed ineligible for the remainder of the season. Subsequently, President McVeigh created an ad hoc committee for the appeal process per policy 0155, which partially reads, 'Ad hoc committees may be created and changed at any time by the president, and each board committee shall be convened by a chairperson who shall report for the committee and shall be appointed by the president.' Only three trustees can serve on a committee. Being vice president, I was selected to chair. Treasurer Gerby and Trustee Eastep were added, and Trustee Austin was named as alternate by President McVeigh. Due to her policy and education background, public comments in Thursday's special meeting, and understanding our procedures and policies as a board, I selected Candace Jones for the committee and asked her to co-chair. I felt it was important to have a balance of board members and parents from the football team. Candace is a parent of a sophomore football player. We then added Tammy Carr, junior parent, and Tamika Leonard, senior parent. Code Short was available to us to answer any questions during our sessions. Thank you to all contributors. We quickly met twice to discuss, not deliberate, what may go into an appeal letter. The ad hoc committee took no actions as a team, knowing that this would go to the board today. Susan took minutes for transparency, and Candace consolidated our thoughts in two documents for the board to discuss in closed session tonight. Thank you to the student athletes who came to share their opinions with the board at that special meeting, as their voices are always important, and thank you for being here tonight as well. They are working hard on and off the field, and the situation is no fault of theirs. We hope that the players feel listened to and supported. This process has reinforced to me how strong we are when we work together as one in service of our students. I hope we have a good discussion later tonight as a board and have action after the closed session in order to move forward to file this appeal. This is a challenging task, but we need to try." Susan, did you want to add anything?
I guess, thanks for letting me be part of this. I wanted to do something and approached and said, you know, we need to draft something, and so was happy to work with Jennifer and Brad and other members of the community. We spent about four and a half hours the past two days, and, you know, I think what we're going to discuss and hopefully have the board work, work on together, and hoping to submit something. Yeah, I just thank you all for, for your feedback and comments and emails that I haven't been able to respond to even individually. So, you know, you are being heard, and I'm glad we're moving, hopefully moving forward with some things.
Yeah, I'll just acknowledge that as well, you know, and say that. I just think whenever, as a community, as students, as parents, as coaches, when we come together, I think we can do a lot of good. And so I want to thank, I was glad to be a part of this team, and I'll be honest with you, the biggest reason why I wanted to be a part of this team and I wanted to do this work over the last couple of days is because of you guys, okay? Thank you for coming to talk to us. Thank you for talking about your experience. Thanks for, for those connections, right? We serve you. And so I was glad to do that. I was happy to be a part of, of this team on behalf of your team. So thank you, and thank you Candace, and thank you Tammy, and thank you Tamika. It was, it was awesome to work together with you, and that, and I'm just excited now to get to work and share with you guys about what the team put together.
Thank you. At this point, we, well, where are we? Okay. Administration, board updates. Dr. Lodge first.
So, yeah, I'd like to start today with some concerns about growing antisemitism and racism that we're experiencing. According to the ADL, US antisemitism incidents have skyrocketed 360% in the aftermath of the latest conflict in the Middle East. And at our own high school, we've seen racist and antisemitic incidents, most recently in our parking lots. And we do want our students to be aware that we have cameras everywhere and ultimately do discipline students that perform these acts of hate. All of this is really disturbing, and I'm hoping to call on our community, our parents and our staff to continue to address this with our student body. We have to be more resolute in our efforts to promote civility, unity, and finding common ground. I also want to talk tonight about the ongoing discussion we've had specifically over this last week and hearing a lot of feedback about what our athletic department is not doing right. And I'll acknowledge that there are some things that our relatively young athletic department will improve on, but they do a lot of great things, and it brought stability to a department that has consistently turned over athletic directors every few years. So I'm going to talk to you about the accomplishments of our athletic department, specifically Athletic Director Mantha. Since she's come into the district, she's worked to change the process as there was none on how we onboard coaches at the beginning of new, each new athletic season. Second, she's established an evaluation process for coaches using the Grit Leadership Model. And again, there was no process before, and this process now allows, for the first time, for student athletes and families to have a say in how coaches are evaluated. The student grade check process has improved tremendously under her leadership with frequent grade checks, and students do need to sit out of competition so they're not able to keep up with minimum standards to play sports. Next, the interview process for onboarding coaches has changed for the better and is much more, much more a comprehensive process. It's helped to improve the expectations of our coaches to operate with the highest level of professionalism. She, along with Jeff Pike, who's the Assistant Athletic Director, have improved the visibility of the department significantly. They have an AD or Assistant AD at so many athletic events, both home and away, and that did not happen with previous athletic departments. They've updated the SAS Athletic Handbook, which has not been comprehensively updated in many years. They've required that all head coaches are CPI certified, which is beyond the MHSAA minimum expectations. They've held seasonal annual coaches meetings to have all coaches get acquainted with the rules and policies and provide feedback to constantly improve the SAS athletic policies. The athletic department now uses big teams, which allows for greater communication through a well-maintained website and allows for collection of all athletic registration materials that can now be accessed by coaches and trainers electronically. Along with the AD from Pioneer, Ashley has created, for the last three years, run the SEC Women's Leadership Conference, at which 10 female students from each of the 14 SEC schools attend a program that includes speeches and lessons on leadership.
Thank you very much. Not sure which direction to go. We'll start with our students, please.
I was just going to make a quick announcement. The marching band had competition this Monday, and I'm proud to announce that we received perfect scores in every category and As in every subject. And I would just like to do a quick shout-out to the, to the football team for all your support throughout our season. It's my fourth year in the marching band, and I know a lot of other people around Michigan and other marching bands. And having the support and relationship between the marching band and the football team that we have here is something really special. And I know it may not seem a lot to you to just come out and watch our Monday performance, our practice Monday performance, and eat pizza, but to a lot of the members of the marching band, especially the younger members who look at you as like some, like sometimes like the stars or the heroes of the school, it definitely means a lot to have eyes on them and to have our work and our recognized. So thank you for that.
And I just want to say thank you to the Key Club and Celine Track for their presentations tonight, and then Celine football players, coaches, and families for coming tonight and sharing. Thank you.
Yeah, so quickly, I just want to, I want to thank all those that have come out and spoke here, students and parents recently. It's such an important part of our process. We should welcome the tough comments and the, as well as the positive ones. It's okay to be critical of us as a district, and we need to use that to improve. We need to do this in a respectful manner, and for the most part, we have. I did hear some comments that kind of claimed that Mr. Lodge or Superintendent Lodge was racist in some of these decisions, and I just want to tell you, Steve, that that is not you. So I appreciate you.
Keep going. I'm not ready.
I, this was the first homecoming in a long, long time that we couldn't attend, and we missed it. Having two collegiate athletes has proven to make my fall a little bit busier than, than normal. And I know Drew was, was probably the saddest filler to miss it. He was hoping to crown Charlie the next king. He didn't know it would be Charlie, but hoping to crown the next king, but was diving, and that was a surprise to us. And so I am sad that I missed it, but I was following on all the socials to try to like see how the game was going and, and how the band and the halftime activities, and then seeing all the pictures on Saturday. So I just want to applaud the committees for their work in, I know it's a lot of work to put together all of the activities for homecoming, and, and to the team for another great victory. So thanks for that. I think that I also have been reflecting a lot on last Thursday. I was glad that I could be here and hear all of your comments and just really taking a moment to kind of think about all of those and, and just really keeping students central in, in decision-making. So thank you again for, for writing us and for coming and speaking. I know that it's... I know that it's often not super comfortable to come up to the microphone, but your voices were heard, and so we appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Miller. A week ago Sunday, a few of us, some of us in this room ran in the Chad Tough Run Tough Race, including Zach Castor and Superintendent Lottz, and I stumbled across the finish line maybe 30, 40 minutes after you were already home having a bath by the time I got across the line. But it was a great race, it was a great opportunity to meet so many people, and it was just wonder, it's very energetic and very exciting to start off the race with all of those people and then watch the antelopes dash on ahead, and it was great fun. I also wanted to say thank you to those who walked in the homecoming parade. In all of my years on the school board, and number eight now, I have never had school board members walk. I know some of us were busy, and I get that, but we actually, Steben Gerby McVeigh and Eystep walked and threw candy with, some of us with targeted aim at the people, and it was, it was great. You know, there's a, there's a winter holiday parade as well, you know, we could always, there's another chance for you to walk, but thank you very much. I'll pass it on.
Tommy, thank you for sharing that. I had heard about that also, and I really appreciate you bringing that up. I got to know Coach Short obviously more over the past couple of days, and I'm sure the dance team will invite you all to something. I can tell you the cheerleaders are going to invite you to something, so we look forward to having you support them as well. I know there's a lot of really difficult conversations going on with our athletic Hornet family, but I'm proud of the resilience and the effort to work together, so thank you. This morning was our Foundation for Celine Area Schools monthly meeting. I gave all trustees a card. It's an invitation to our Fall Luncheon. This is a fundraiser and a wonderful opportunity to better understand what is going on with our building and our staff grants. The foundation does a lot of incredible work. Stacy couldn't be here tonight. I think she said it was senior night, so she's doing that. But please sign up, and if you are so inclined, sponsor a table. I'm sure that they would really appreciate that. The foundation also wanted me to remind everybody that this Friday is the Chad Tough Night and our Hall of Fame, so hopefully we'll see you on the porch. With regards to Thursday, I did want to make a comment also. I know how hard it is to facilitate meetings when there's a lot of passion and a lot of different opinions and viewpoints and information, to be quite honest. So, I appreciate the meeting happening. I think we need to continue to work through our bridges of civility around some of the comments from the podium, and it's difficult. I totally get it, but we can accomplish so much more through civil conversation and respect. We all love our kids. We all love each other's kids and this entire Hornet family, and I look forward in the coming months and years to working closely together in partnership. I never thought I would have to say this from the board table, but I've had the pleasure of being Steve's first board president for two years and working with him since. He is not a racist. He has been an incredible partner in our work around diversity, equity, and inclusion through various policies and working with all of us. And I know that that was hard to hear, and I am sorry for that, that you heard that. Thank you.
Mr. Gerby.
I echo a number of things that are here. Congratulations to our band. I want to thank everybody who's associated with Homecoming. I had a, I did, I had a really good time with the parade and throwing candy and having kids run into your legs, and it was lovely. And so I just want to know that I appreciated all of those things, and yeah. I said earlier about, I appreciated that we came together to problem solve, right? I just think that's important for teams, for students. That's a good message for learning processes and all of that. And while I'm thinking about learning processes, you know, one of the things that I know is a constant tenet and something that is, definitely speaks to our superintendent, is his incredible desire to always be reflective in changing and improvement and all of those kinds of things. It is something that lives within this school district, and I'm proud of our school district. I'm proud of our leader, and I think that we will be reflective. We will look at having tough conversations, and we will look at making sure that we do the things we need to do to get better, because we've always done that, right? And so I want to make sure that I say that out loud, and you know, I hope everybody finds as much orange as they can in their closets, and I'm just excited to support Chad and their family and Chad Tough and all that this week. So, thank you.
I'm going to start by mentioning National Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs from September 15th to October 15th, celebrating the history, culture, and contribution of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. So, honoring those folks this month. I also don't want to let a board meeting go by without reminding people as we see ballots come out of the millage proposal. And I just would like to take a minute to name the kids who are helped by this money. And just a reminder, if this millage doesn't pass, the money would have to come out of a special fund to help support our learners with autism, deafness and hardness of hearing, deaf-blind disability, early childhood developmental delay, emotional impairment, cognitive impairment, severe multiple impairments, physical impairment, otherwise health impaired, specific learning disability, speech and language disability, traumatic brain injury, and visual impairment. But in other words, so many of our kids and learners who mean a lot to each of us, and I have special place in my heart and mind personally and professionally for these kids and these educators. So, please give serious consideration to that millage renewal. Lastly, I'm sorry that I was unable to be at the meeting the other night, but I would like to take a moment to wish Jewish families in the district Shana Tova and for Saturday an easy fast. Thanks.
Kind of spoke to this already, but I just wanted to say that the leadership that I've seen from the Celine football players, their families, the coach who I got to spend time with, and the team's staff has been so very inspirational. Seeing like that kind of advocacy for your teammates and not necessarily being focused on the loss that you all had during this. It's so important that, you know, seeing you lift up your teammate. I really appreciate that, and I think all students look up to that, and you know, I appreciate that. I don't know how to respond to this. I want everybody's experience that they share up here to be validated and heard. I'm not going to tell someone what they have or have not experienced or how they feel. And so I, you know, do not want, I don't think it's fair to sit up here and say things when somebody has shared something so personal. So, I, yes, when somebody says something, I'm listening, and that is your experience, and I appreciate your sharing of that.
Thank you. The consent agenda is next. The consent agenda is listed in this agenda and will not be read aloud. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
And who is that?
Lauren.
Lauren Gold, thank you.
Support Steben.
J.S. Steben. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Right, seven to zero. We have a consent agenda approved. Thank you very much. Items on the next agenda, sir.
Right, we have one scheduled report with a bond update from Rex and his team.
I am looking forward to that. This is the public comment section, as noted earlier. Usually people get up and rush to the podium, not rush away from the podium. Thank you for coming tonight. Members of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. We have two speakers who have signed forms right now. Eugene Rush and, pardon? You have more?
Do you have more?
Thank you. Oh, good. It's not three or four hundred.
No, it's not all public.
Right, I'd like to call up Eugene Rush, and I'm afraid I can't read the name very well, but Sabrina Patillo? Good. Could you tell me how you say your last name? Thank you. If you've not spoken before, we're getting our timers set, and we have, at the two-minute mark, you'll get a yellow warning card. Oh, 2:30, right. At the 32nd to the end mark, you'll get a yellow warning card, letting you know you're nearly the end of your time, and the red card means time is up. Thank you.
First of all, board, thank you for having us. There we go. All right, we are here this evening because we are disappointed. Part of my job is to be held accountable to all of the citizens of Washtenaw County. So I don't come to you today as Sergeant Rush. I come to you today as Eugene Rush. We are the proud parents of one Joshua Rush, who graduated here a few years ago, and now junior James Rush, who is here today. A AAA rating is one of the highest ratings that you can get, but I urge you, I ask you, and I challenge you that the AAA today should be for actively advocating for our kids. The short history is this. We brought our children here for educational purposes as well as athletic purposes. A few years ago, our oldest son was the victim of racial discrimination. The outcome of that was several committees, several things that were formed, several changes that were made. But we're disappointed because bigotry in our society, racism in our society is real, and it is still here. And our youngest son was attacked, as well as other teammates on his team. And we have not gotten that AAA rating that we request or ask from the district or from the board. We want active advocacy in communication, active advocacy in transparency, and active advocacy for our kids. Not just our son, but for all kids. We want active advocacy for Nolan, for Lincoln, for Isaiah, for Jaden, for Dane, for Allen, for Austin, for Ryan. We ask you and we challenge you because the pro and professional, if you take the pro off and put it in front of active, it makes it proactive. And we ask you to be active, to be proactive, and to be accountable to all of our kids, not just some of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are, is this a separate three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. Appreciate that.
So, my name is Sabrina. I'm Joshua and James' mother, and I say Joshua because in 2022, he graduated from Celine. He also played on the football team, and he was also, I don't want to say victim, but he was targeted racially. When he was on CNN, on the news, he was part of the football team, and we had to endure that. We trusted Celine. We sat back, both of us in law enforcement, taking a step back, let you do your job. It's not enough. Here we are again. I am so furious. What are you doing? Who reached out to us? What's the plan? Where do we go from here? Who's talking to my son? Teacher is saying, hi, how you doing? If he's not doing well, do they actually have the opportunity to hear him out? Or do they teach the class, and he goes to the next class? No one is listening. I'm not worried about my son too much because he had an outpouring of love. But what about the kid that's sitting in the corner? That's not a superstar on any athletic team? Who's advocating for him? What is happening here? Because I do not understand. It is affecting the students indirectly and directly. Those two that are gone, they don't have to worry about the chatter, the looks, the this, the that. He's still there. Who's reaching out to my son? Who's reaching out to other children? It has to stop proactive. We did this last, a couple of years ago. It stopped. We're not sweeping it under the rug. The mama bear is out. I'm out, and I'm angry, and it needs to stop. It needs to be communication. We talk about transparency. I don't see it. Why do I have to reach out and say, hey, what's going on? I haven't heard anything. And then they want to talk about the two kids. I'm not talking about them. They're no longer in the system. What's going on with the kids that are still in school? How are the teachers handling it? Who's reached out, reach out to coach? What are we doing? We can't sit here and talk about it and say beautiful words and paragraphs with no action. That doesn't sit well in my spirit, and it doesn't sit well with me as a mother. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sergeant Rush. Megan Gunderson, please.
Well, can I go, Jen?
So, first of all, I would just want to reiterate the ask for those three young ladies who were here from the Key Club, who made the request of financially supporting kids who maybe are unable to participate because of finances. We are a district that has a lot of resources, and I understand there's a lot of fingers in the pot, but there's a way to apply for a scholarship for any sport in this school, and I wish that there was one for every club. And then the second thing I want to talk about is the Ad-Hoc Committee. I didn't know it was an agenda item because it didn't have a title, or I would have spoken earlier today. I had asked publicly that there be an independent review done, and I'm a little bit disappointed that the internal committee, I just feel like thoughtful attention to both the function and the surrounding optics of some kind of an appeal would have been a little bit more thought out. I appreciate that there are a number of people on this panel, but I personally feel that it shadowed that if you are a person on that committee, that you have ties to the athletic department. I think it would have been better served to the community as a whole if the members of that committee who are representing this board were not parents with ties to the athletic department and/or the team itself. There are more athletic teams who have had issue with the athletic department than the current situation as than the current situation as discussed at the podium last week and previous weeks. I believe when I counted them up with one of the trustees, there are currently five teams that have been affected in a negative manner by the current flow through that department. And again, I guess I'm just a little bit disappointed. I wish that it would have, that this overview would have been done by a third party or a more neutral setting because it does affect more than a single sport. Well, I understand that the appeal itself is directed at one sport. The nuances of a review cover many more students than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Jolena Nolar? No, I'm sorry, thank you. Noller.
We are seeing each other way too often here. Maybe this will be my last time here. First, thank you again for taking the time to listen to all of us. And I just want to keep bringing us back to the point of the end goal here. And that is to get these forfeitures reversed. That has to stay at the forefront. All of these other pieces are important. I need those to set aside. As Coleman Ross mentioned earlier, time is imperative right now. There are implications to our boys' season right now that we have to get this appeal submitted. We were swift with the self-reporting. I need us to be swift with this appeal. And I don't want us to stop with one. If the first appeal doesn't work, you try again and then you keep trying. Rules are guidelines. I get that people want to say, oh, rules are rule. We got to stop. No, that's not what we do. We are here to make sure our kids are taken care of and that the people who need to be penalized are the people who erred. Our boys did not err. They deserve to have this wrong made right. Additionally, I, I appreciate having each other's back. Believe me, I'm in a situation at work right now where I don't feel like my colleagues and my boss have my back. So I appreciate that. Timing is so important and with all due respect, I'm not sure tonight was the best time to talk about the accolades of the current administration in your athletic department. That probably was bad timing. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Jolena Noller. One more speaker, I assume? Uh-oh, Danielle Sims Woods would like to speak.
Good evening. So I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I sat back and listened to just about every board member talk about how great their experience is with Celine, Steve. That's not my experience. Nobody can tell me how I feel. And until some of you guys are of color, you can't tell me. Sometimes I'm in education too. And sometimes when we send equity meetings, I get mad because I feel like people need to check their implicit bias at the door. Because when you start thinking of how people of color would think, we, you know, we talk about the Jewish community, but let's talk about the people of color, the black and the brown people around here and how they feel. I'm not the only parent that feels this way. I'm not the only parent probably that stood up besides the Rushes. But you guys need to check your implicit bias. Because when I wrote my statement, I checked mine. I checked mine to see of how all the people that are non-color would feel about it, but still spoke my truth. I did not call that man a racist. I said there was racist action towards me and my family. My eight-year-old talks about all the time how she wants to go to Heritage. I work for Ann Arbor. It's easier for her to go to an Ann Arbor school. Her school is literally five minutes away from Skyline. But it's not even about the five minutes at this point. It's what am I about to subject my baby to? The people that turn a blind eye of that racism is real. It's real. It's real to me and my children. And some of the actions have been systematic racism. And it's not just Celine, it's the world. But for Celine to sit on your chairs and be like, I'm sorry that you had to deal with it, bull. Because that's how I feel as a woman of color. That's how my son felt as a young man of color. And there are several of them others, not just on the football team, that feel that way. Celine, as a community, as a whole, the United States as a whole, needs to check their implicit bias. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you very much. Next board meeting will be held on October 22nd at 6:30. I'll be missing the first half and Vice President Steben will take over the chairing duties that evening. Oh, there's one more?
Apologies, Mr. McVeigh. Oh, he knows my name. That's great. I appreciate it.
He does, he does. That's why we didn't call you up. I saw it in your hand. It's Alex, right? Oh, I'm sorry, your name. Sorry, Sean. Sorry, my bad. Thank you.
I don't know Alex. But I appreciate you allowing me to come in. I was at the middle school football game supporting the kids over there announcing, so I apologize for my tardiness. But I wanted to have an opportunity to speak if I can have that tonight. Hopefully it starts back right now. I didn't know it started. Nobody told me. I didn't see the green card say go. So just going forward, I want to just thank you guys for allowing me to come in here and talk. And I've never done this before. I always, I've talked in front of people plenty of times. I work for the state government. I'm in front of people every day. I work in Jackson, very impoverished community compared to Celine. And I work for a, a office that preaches D E I like nobody's tomorrow. And sometimes I take it in and listen and sometimes I fight against it. But that's just human, human nature. And then listening to everybody talk, it helps me to consider and understand the more and more reasons on why it's important. But it's only important if it's used correctly. And I have a director that knows all about it and preaches it all the time. And, you know, just, it's, it's supposed to promote fair treatment and full participation of all people, all, particularly groups who have been historically underrepresented. The issue with everything that's going on with the football team and with the, the school district is I don't think that statement is being followed. It's pick and choose. There's more emphasis towards different groups than certain groups. And it should be all fairness, equity, equal. And the situations I've endured in coming to Celine, we have had our own issues, issues with sexism, issues with discrimination and stuff like that. And I don't think it was dealt with the correct way, quick. Everything's quick. Sometimes things have to be investigated with timeness and fairness. And in my job, I, I have to do that too. So in your guys' job and you guys hold a specific role, superintendent, athletic directors, principals, board members, you guys sometimes need to take time. And sometimes we make mistakes because you guys are all human. And we, and I appreciate what Ms. Estep said that, and I've learned this myself, that even though there might be things that she doesn't agree with, people said things up here and you might not agree with them and everything, but you're going to allow us to have our opinions and our feelings and stuff and say, hey, guess what? We might not agree, we might have different opinions, but we can work together as a community to figure out what the common goal is so that we can have a community where everybody is working for the good. Such in my family and friends' situation. They had a situation, and I don't believe by, based on what I've heard, that they were treated fair and equitable and everything. Based on what? We'll never know. But ultimately, I just believe that the decisions that were made in regards to the football team were taken too quickly and wasn't given a proper time to be investigated and it was done too quickly. And sometimes we make mistakes, but the best way to fix a mistake is to go back, fix it, say that you made a mistake and go forward with it and not just hide with it. But I appreciate you guys' time. I see the red checker. But ultimately, the only way this is going to get fixed is if we all just respect everybody and work together.
Thank you, Mr. Furlong. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next Board of Education meeting will be held on October 22nd. I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into closed session at, I'm going to say, 8:35 with the intent to re-enter open session at approximately ten, ten-ish for the purpose of discussion of personnel matters under Section 8A. Under say, Section 8A, a simple majority is sufficient to enter into closed session. And there is a high chance that there will be an action item when we return, but I don't know at this point for sure. Do we have a motion?
So moves, Steben.
J.S. J.M., all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, off we go. Thank you.
...
We have returned. I'd like to entertain a motion to re-enter closed session of the Board of Education at 9:56 with the intent to reopen the session at about 10:30 or so for the purpose of discussion of items under Section 8H. Under 8H, a simple majority vote is sufficient to enter into closed session.
Did you open? Do you have to re-enter open session?
Re-enter open session? We voted on that in closed. So now I'm entertaining a motion to re-enter closed session. Is that Tim?
Support East of.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. Thank you. We are going to return to closed session to cover an item that is covered under a separate item of Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
We have returned. I'd like to entertain a motion to re-enter closed session of the Board of Education at 9:56, with the intent to reopen the session at about 10:30 or so for the purpose of discussion of items under Section 8H. Under 8H, a simple majority vote is sufficient to enter into closed session. Do I have a...
Did you open? Does that... do you have to re-enter open session then you have to do?
Re-enter open session? We voted on that in closed.
Yeah.
So now, I'm entertaining a motion to re-enter closed session.
Still moved.
Is that Tim?
Support E. Stav.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Seven zero. Thank you. We are going to return to closed session to cover an item that is covered under a separate item of Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
Thank you, we've returned from closed session. I would like to entertain a motion to direct superintendent Lodge to submit a formal letter of appeal to the Michigan High School Athletic Association on behalf of the Board of Education.
So moved, Stubben.
Stubben.
Support.
Support Gerby, is there any discussion on this matter? At this point, there's no discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A letter will be on its way tomorrow morning to the M-H-S-A-A. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of October 8th at, I can't see, is it 10:32?
Yep.
10:32.
So moved.
Was that Jay Miller?
No, Susanista.
Support Miller.
Susanista, Jay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Wait, I get to tap it twice. Thank you.